Anybody, any of the staff that wish to, maybe I'll just do a quick introduction of the staff here at the table, so you have some sense of who's here. We have Lou Verell, our Chief Administrative Officer, Warren Jones, our Director of Corporate Services, Deb Hopkins, our Deputy Director of Corporate Services, and on the other side, our Planning Department, which is made up of Bruce Anderson, who is our Director of Building and Planning, and Ms. Jensen, who is our Chief Planner. And today we'll be taking information in from you. I'm going to just invite the staff from the Building and Planning Department to present a summary of the proposed bylaws, and then we'll get into this for real. And I just want to point out as well, we're trying a new seating arrangement tonight, so if this all looks foreign, if you've been here before, we're trying a different setup so we can see and interact with staff in a way, and bring people addressing council a little bit closer to us. So with that, I'll hand it over to, is it Ms. Jensen or Mr. Anderson? Who are doing the, Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, your worship. As a bit of background, staff brought forward a report to council in March of this year, advising that the district needed to consider a regulatory program for how to best manage the retail sale and distribution of recreational cannabis. That was in anticipation of the federal government legalizing the use and sale of cannabis, which took effect in October. This was followed by another staff report in July, which provided council options for how they could proceed. Council could direct staff to start a review process for putting together a framework for evaluating proposals to sell cannabis within the community, or, due to time constraints and limited resources, council could direct staff to prepare bylaw amendments that would prohibit the sale and distribution of cannabis within the community. This approach provides a means to manage requests in the interim until council directs staff to prepare guidelines for reviewing these proposals. In July, council requested staff to bring forward bylaw amendments. So bylaw 3531.103, which is in front of you tonight, effectively prohibits the retail sale of cannabis, requiring any proposal to operate a recreational cannabis business to go through a rezoning process. The bylaw itself amends the zoning bylaw by prohibiting the use of land or buildings for the retail sale of cannabis, prohibiting the commercial growing or production of cannabis or cannabis products, and prohibiting the operation of a cannabis consumption lounge. In other words, consuming cannabis in a commercial setting, which may include the retail sale of cannabis accessory items.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. There's been sufficient notice of public hearing on this matter, and we have the bylaw in front of us here today. I just want to receive all the written submissions. We have some late, do we need to do that as a separate motion, or is that essentially included as part of this? Ms. Hopkins?
No, yes, actually, sorry.
So I'll just need a motion to receive the written correspondence?
Move, proceed.
Moved and seconded. Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed. And then I believe, is there any late correspondence that's arrived since the amended agenda was published?
Your worship, there was none.
Okay, thank you. Then I would invite persons deeming their interests in property affected by bylaw number 3531-103 to come forward, and I will just stress, this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make those views known, and council members are here to listen with an open mind, and are here to listen to your input. We have all agreed that to not prejudge this, the outcome of these applications. But I just want to point out, this is a formal public hearing. It's not a Q and A session, so we can't respond to questions, but we can capture them and reflect this back to staff as part of our decision-making criteria. So with that, I'm going to try and ask people to keep their comments or pieces reasonably brief, two or three minutes, but I will not restrict anybody from saying as much as they want. I just would like to give everybody a chance to cycle through at least once before we get to second and third submissions, if there are any. So with that, I'll invite members of the public to come forward and speak. Please come forward, just ask that you state your name and your municipality residence. I think we're still on the tall microphone.
Sorry, we're on the tall one. My apologies.
No problem. I'm James Sultanam, Tenonai Monterey Avenue, Oak Bay. I'm going to read my statements, so I don't forget, a few important points. Your worship and councillors, first of all, let me take this opportunity to congratulate you for putting your names forward, and for becoming the new leaders of our community. This is hard work, most likely. None of you need the huge amount of money you're paid. Personally, I feel that we've got the best we could ask for. Every single one of you has a lot to give to our community, regardless of which route you will decide to follow tonight. I expressed my general feelings and thoughts about cannabis last July, and I will not revisit that submission, but I'd like to speak to the issue of preemptively amending the bylaw, the zoning bylaw, as proposed. I posted on Facebook, a Facebook comment on the Meet the Locals page on Sunday. You probably know what I'm talking about. I'm not sure if you all had the chance to read, I'm not sure if you're even a member to the, subscribe to the Facebook page. I'd like to read it, if I may. I'll be brief, but I'll probably need more than three minutes. Smiley face. I'll then explain why an alternative route is needed. I'll start with the Meet the Locals posting. We strive, we strive to be a responsible yet progressive community. Changing the zoning bylaw preemptively is really not the way to go, even under the premise that the change could slash would be temporary and could be revised at any time. Changing a bylaw now is unnecessary and a radical move. It involves a lot of work, and it's another decision prone to potentially trigger divisiveness in our community. Besides, it's most likely that marijuana will be forgotten when council revisits its priority in the months to come. As a community, we truly have more important issues to deal with, starting with infrastructure and housing. In the real world, and I repeat, in the real world, dispensaries don't promote lounging, just retail. Smoking is just one among many ways of administering cannabinoids. And I ask a question, would take a CBD pill or massaging your sore back qualify as lounging? Just in case a shop started such an onsite business, which I think it's unlikely, very unlikely that a dispensary would engage in that. And that's what they sell, actually. They sell pills, they sell ointments, oil, okay? CBD, CBD, not only a T and C, they sell CBD, which is for pain. It is important to acknowledge that marijuana and dispensaries are legal in Canada. From the point of, from the point of view of zoning, municipalities are supposed to regulate marijuana, not decide whether it's legal or not, which I think it's what I'm doing here, and I hope that's what we're doing here, and people understand it. This is a complex and new, this is complex and new right now. Let's take the high road, instead of making decisions based on fear, misinformation, and anecdotal facts. How about a resolution by council deciding that the district will not accept applications for marijuana business at this point, for a certain period of time, AKA moratorium? Until, number one, a non-fouls session is held to educate us residents on the topic, like a lunch talk, just like Victoria does. Invite Vic and Sanich Planning Department and leading dispensaries in the Greater Victoria. This is a chance to apply Oak Bay's new engagement strategy slash tool. Two, either delay the current public hearing, or use it, but adjust it, the proposed bylaw, proposed bylaw to only deal with restrictions on a street frontage, or include this preemptive, preemptive move to restrict lounging, or impose, to restrict distance from use close to school, businesses, et cetera. Three, a bylaw would then be enacted after this education session, in time so we can get informed, the staff get more, get more informed, and then we proceed with a more mature, more informed bylaw. Finally, remember that allowing dispensary in Oak Bay is not about having a bunch of stoners invading our little piece of heaven. It is about compassion and allowing many seniors and others to have access to something that a number of us, myself included, rely on to deal with chronic, sometimes terminal disease. This is what I believe in. So just to finish, I would like to, to, to read three paragraphs. So this is an article published in the Globe and Mail, and I-
Mr. Sultanam, just, maybe if you can come back to that, you've been ten minutes into the, into three minutes, and I'll just let other people speak and then come back to that. You're welcome to come back and read that, that's okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, your worship.
Welcome back in a minute, thanks. Invite others to come forward and speak. Again, just your name and municipality.
Michael Nagel, I live in, whoa, I live in Oak Bay, and I just have a couple of points. And thank you for letting us do this, that's, that's a great thing. Why is our council attempting to deny easy access to illegal prescription drug, i.e. cannabis, for those in our community? Why is council attempting to deny Oak Bay residents of a new tax base source, I'm sorry, unemployment opportunities? Not asking, people aren't asking for anything different. You could use the liquor protocols that are already in place as to, you wouldn't have, excuse me, you wouldn't have a liquor store close to a school, therefore you wouldn't have a cannabis store close to a school. I mean, it just seems logical. So enact, if you, if you are going to have cannabis stores or lounges, just don't have them, you're, use the same protocol that liquor stores have. I don't see really any difference. And it may be a surprise to some of you, but next year, Shopper's Drug Mart will be selling edibles. They were given the contract years ago. This is not something that happened last year, or the year before, it happened ten years ago. So this has been, having, having council actually even have this discussion, you, you all have known about it. I mean, every council member, every, every Canadian has known about it for years now that it was coming. We don't need anything else, just let it happen, just let ordinary business happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? Same protocol, I'll just give your name and municipality, and just write it on the sheet of paper, so we have the right spelling for the record.
My name's Brittany, and I live in Oak Bay. As you can tell, I'm very nervous, I don't want to be here, I feel like I have to. I do not believe a ban on cannabis companies in Oak Bay is a good idea. I'm going to get started with a little bit of a backstory on myself first, so you can understand where I'm coming from. I have multiple serious health issues that include gut and liver disease, heart dysfunction, and painful arthritis. These diseases cause me to be very sick with uncontrollable vomiting and pain, which eventually leads to life-threatening malnutrition, dehydration, and liver failure. After many unsuccessful trials with prescription-based medications, I turned to medical cannabis. And this was absolutely the only thing that would rid me of my debilitating symptoms. When I first started medicating with cannabis, I was uneducated about the drug. I thought I knew all about it, and its effects, and how to properly use it, but I really didn't. Unfortunately, being uneducated about these properties of cannabis, I was left feeling high. A local professional cannabis dispensary was where I turned to get educated. They gave me knowledge and compassion, they taught, taught me about smoking alternatives. I learned that the THC of the plant gets you high, and the CBD helps the body, and has little to no psychoactive effects. And this correct combination of the two, at appropriate times of the day, can make someone like me a properly functioning human being. Cannabis helped me get my life back. It helped me be able to keep up with my kids. And even run a successful business. And without the professional knowledge of this dispensary, my life wouldn't be the same. I know some of you are asking, if my use is strictly for cannabis, for medicinal purposes, then why wouldn't people like me get it from a doctor? It's because even after almost twenty years of having medical cannabis legal, it still goes untested, and is still very much stigmatized. And because of this, most doctors have little to no knowledge of cannabis. And they're also worried about how it would reflect on them professionally. To de-stigmatize and educate is just a couple of the reasons why our government made cannabis legal on all levels. We need to trust our government, and that they are doing the right thing. I know most Oak Bay residents don't want to see this beautiful place go up into a metaphorical cloud of cannabis smoke, but if the good people at Municipal Hall make sure that all the cannabis retailers are following strict guidelines put into place by the government, it will not. The prohibition of cannabis put into place ninety years ago left many of us with ignorance. Stigmatization and ignorance around cannabis has caused much pain and suffering in the sick, and this needs to stop. It needs to stop now. To put a ban on cannabis sales in Oak Bay is a big step backwards. It leaves people with serious health issues, having to go to other municipalities. If every municipality in Victoria put a ban on cannabis sales, where would people like Of course, back to the black market. The black market where crime and violence run rampant, where there's no quality control, and where drugs are sold to minors. Having access to legal cannabis dispensary puts this black market right out of business. Although cannabis is not a hard drug, it is still a drug, and should be taken out of the hands of the black market, and into the hands of scientists, medical professionals, and other educated people. Let's not leave Oak Bay exposed to the black market. Putting a ban on cannabis in Oak Bay is a big statement. And a big slap in the face to people like me. It says, "The people of Oak Bay wish to support the stigmatism around cannabis." It says, "The municipality of Oak Bay wants to remain just another roadblock for the effective treatment of the sick." It says, "The people of Oak Bay disagree with the future of scientific research and possible disease prevention from cannabis." Now I'm standing here asking, what statement does Oak Bay want to make? Thank you.
Bravo, bravo. Thank you. I have to ask everyone here to refrain from either booing or cheering, just, this has to be, this has to be a safe place for everybody to feel comfortable coming forward to the, to the microphone. Fair enough, fair enough. Yes, thank you for bringing down your name, and if anybody else wishes to come forward, is welcome to come forward at this time.
I'm not coming forward again, I won't do it again on it.
Please do write down your name, thank you.
Make sure yourself spell it right. Again, thanks for your time, guys.
Yeah, my name is Stu Moore, I'm resident in Oak Bay, I'll keep this very short and sweet. As far as I'm concerned, this whole process is bollocks. There's no need for any kind of zoning bylaw, you bring in a business, the business rises and falls on its own merits. I don't really think that any scrutiny would be given to a new butcher shop, or a new toy store, and I don't understand why there's any scrutiny given to cannabis, which is perfectly legal in this country. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Charles Harp, and I am a citizen of Oak Bay, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the bylaw banning the retail sale of cannabis within the municipality, and I just have a few bullet points that I'd like to emphasize. Legal cannabis is now the law of the land. Oak Bay citizens who use legal cannabis will be forced to patronize retailers in more enlightened municipalities, causing inconvenience created solely by their elected representatives. Prohibition will not prevent usage. Prohibiting legal cannabis retail sales within the municipality will encourage the black market, and it will expand health and public safety risk for Oak Bay citizens. Prohibiting federally and provincially legal cannabis retail sales, sales is regressive and repressive. Prohibiting legal cannabis retail sales is an imposition of morality on an increasingly secular society. It is likely that legal cannabis retail sales will be permitted in Oak Bay someday. Sooner or later, it is in the best interest of society at large to advance in unison. Permitting legal cannabis retail sales, sales will contribute to the tax base. Most Oak Bay citizens have family, friends, neighbors, or at least acquaintances who use cannabis products. The age of demonization and prohibition is past, less lean forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Please do write down your name, so we have the right spelling, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harp.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward for the first time? Is there anyone who wishes to come forward a second time? Come on up. You don't have to write your name down a second time, just, just come forward. Mr. Sultanam?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the last two speakers, and I'm just here just to give two examples, and to clarify a little bit more what, what they've just said. I'm here with two articles, one from the Globe and Mail, and the date was, is March 22nd, 2018, and it just says that, "License Marijuana Producer, Theory, Canada Has Signed a Letter of Intent to Supply Medical Cannabis to PharmA Safe." PharmA Safe is just across the street here. And, before I try to explain what this means, is, then the Star, September 21st, 2018, by the way, two days after my birthday, says, "Shoppers Drug Mart Has Received Health Canada Approval to Be a Licensed Medical Marijuana Producer," operating the door, opening the door for the pharmacy giant, again, giant, "to dispense medical marijuana to patients." Medical marijuana, and then it goes to, to, to mention about the agreement with the grower, and quote-unquote, "As trusted medical experts, we believe, we believe pharmacists have an important role to play in the safe, informed use of medical cannabis, and this is the first step in our journey to promote medical cannabis, to provide medical cannabis to our patients." Patients, this is a quote by Shoppers. So I actually worked in the field of regulation, regulating food and drugs. It's a very complex issue, because now you see PharmA Safe dispensing all sorts of regular medication. They will start, or they may start, they've already, they've just signed an agreement to deliver cannabis. So how can we come up with a bylaw that will prevent them from delivering cannabis? This won't last, this really won't last. They will come in a fierce way, trust me. Just think about it, and I'm going to finish here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sultanam. The floor is still open, anybody else who wishes to come and address council, please Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, and city staff, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to thank everyone that's spoken tonight.
Can I just get your name and-
Yeah, in full disclosure, my name's Alan Lingwood, I'm the Chief Compliance Officer of the original farm, a local, not so local, but just around the corner, really, at the corner of Hillside Avenue and Scott Street. We've been a compliant medicinal cannabis dispensary for the past three years, and we have thirty thousand local members, many of which would be in Oak Bay. But I won't go too into depth, based on confidentiality. I, I did want to thank everyone's testimony here this evening, I also did want to advocate for cannabis. The license available to private retailers moving forward is that of a non-medical cannabis retail license. It is heavily regulated by the provincial government, and the provincial, as well as federal governments, are empowering municipalities to- are empowering municipalities to really inject their own flavor, tightening up regulation beyond some of the regulation which exist. The regulations which exist cannot be further relaxed, but they can be tightened by municipalities. We've gone through two provincial license applications with our two stores in the municipality of Victoria. And we have licenses pending, but have chosen to close our shops until we can compliantly operate with our license. While licensing started to progress and legalization started to progress, they were using the language of recreational cannabis. And we were very happy to hear that earlier this year that really switched to non-medical. We do not believe in recreational cannabis. We were truly believers of medicinal cannabis dispensaries. However, we can, we have been empowered to, or I should say the consumers have been empowered based on use. If it's medicinal, they really have freedom of choice, whether they go to a non-medical private retailer, the provincial government online wholesaler, or they can get their Health Canada license and shop at any licensed producer across Canada. However, some of the decisions that will be made this evening or further beyond this evening, it's all about access. It's all about freedom of choice, quality of life, and convenience. And so to honor your, the people of your community in freedom of choice, quality of life, and creating access so that they do not have to sway to the black market or anything like that, they can just go to their local store. The, the zoning, if it's seen as necessary, then absolutely. The municipality has a lot of power to make those decisions. If a pro-cannabis framework is established in Oak Bay, it would be very unlikely that in the next year you would see a licensed cannabis retailer in the community. There are many steps to go through. The provincial license application is a, a long and burdensome one. So there are, there is a, a lot of time yet before you would see a open storefront in your community. Many other communities have established a pre-application sort of framework where businesses can introduce themselves to the community and upon which the municipality can say, well, you might be a good fit. You know, we would encourage you to look for an address and submit a provincial application. And by the time provincial application comes on our desk for a referral, a recommendation, you can then agree or disagree to invite them into your community. So there's many steps along the way. You can impart opinion and, and good judgment and invite those businesses into your community that you really think will reflect your community and honor the people in your community. So having a pro-cannabis decision and rollout doesn't mean that you're inviting a lot of negativity into your community. Quite the opposite, you could be inviting some great operators into your community. The size of Oak Bay, you could have one, two, maybe three local businesses which would service your market more than, than adequately. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
I grew up in Oak Bay, but I live in Senate.
We allow it.
I'm on the border.
The floor is still open. If anybody else wishes to come forward and address us at this time, you're welcome to do so. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? I'll ask a third and final time. Anybody else wish to come forward and address us? Seeing no one else, the next process for us, I'll just give a quick overview so you understand what's happening. We are going to adjourn the public hearing. What time are we at here? 6:35. So we're gonna reconvene as council at 7:00 PM. And we will consider this zoning bylaw change in council at that time in the, in the course of that meeting. So if people wish to stick around and listen to that debate, that will be happening at that point. So I believe for motion to adjourn.
So moved, sorry.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All right, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed. And before we go anywhere, I'm just gonna throw this to Mr. Jones here. We have a little bit of time. Is it appropriate, you think, we, we have so many camera things to do. We were gonna do it after the council meeting, but we could call this another meeting to order and receipt in camera to discuss the, those issues. Is that, is that sufficient time for 25 minutes to do that?
Your worship, I think it would be beneficial for the first time on the agenda anyway, and then we could allow our fire chief to get home at a decent hour tonight.
Sounds good.